Good evening and welcome to the Revere City Council meeting of August 28th. Will you all rise and salute the flag, please? Thank you.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Nowoselski is absent. Councilor Powers is absent. Councilor Rizzo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Sorino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, Councilor Visconti.
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and President Protem McKenna.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the regular meeting of July, the meeting minutes of July 30th, 23.
So ordered.
Madam, excuse me, Madam President.
Councilor Rizzo.
Thank you. Excuse me. I just wanted to offer a point of personal privilege in recognition of the passing of a longtime Revere resident, World War II veteran, World War II Navy veteran, 99 years old, Albert Raleigh. The Raleigh family, while not many of them are still left here in Revere, were a big presence for many years. And on a personal level, I got to know Al, his brother Ray, who's still here, and several other members of his family. And there was, even well into his 90s, you could always find him at the gym, and he could work out with the best of them. The younger guys, he was a real specimen, and he was just a real overall good guy, and I know this city will miss him, our country will miss him. So if we could just rise in a moment of silence in recognition of Albert Raleigh. Thank you very much.
Calendar item number three. Motion presented by Councilor Silvestri that the City Council award a certificate of merit to parking control officer Marco Basta for administering Narcan to an unresponsive person and ultimately saving this individual's life on June 13th.
Councilor Silvestri.
Thank you, Madam President. So on June 13th, Marco during his regular patrol came across a unresponsive person lying on the road. Marco approached and administered Narcan, saving the gentleman's life, and I think we are honoring him here tonight.
Thank you. Will you come up here, Marco, please?
In acknowledgement of extraordinary distinguished and notorious actions, special recognition is hereby ordered to Marco Basada, City of Revere Parking Control. On Tuesday, June 13th, parking control officer Marco Basada, while on duty and patrolling Revere's neighborhoods, came across an unresponsive individual, determined that this person was overdosing and needed immediate medical assistance. By administering Narcan to this individual, Marco ultimately saved this person's life. His quick-thinking actions to save another human will forever be remembered and therefore warrant this recognition. And witness aware of this certificate of merit is gratefully bespoke by the mayor and city council of the City of Revere of Massachusetts on behalf of its citizens this 28th day of August in the year of our Lord 2023 and the Independence of the United States of America 247th.
Calendar item number four, public hearings. Hearing called as ordered on an ordinance further amending the revised ordinances of the City of Revere relative to the regulation of fireworks.
Proponents, this is a public hearing. Proponents? Anyone? Opponents? Anyone? City councilors. Councilor Sorino.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, through you to Andrew at Revere TV. If we could pull up those photographs, please. Thank you, Madam, thank you, Andrew. Madam President, I filed this ordinance change to basically go on the, to get onto our books in ordinance relative to banning fireworks. So right now fireworks are banned in the City of Revere, they're banned statewide, but our city ordinances really don't speak to any penalties or anything beyond just simply the fact that they are not to be shot off within city limits. So this ordinance puts some teeth behind the ordinance that's on the books right now. And as I said at our last meeting, you know, there are fire hazards, there are issues with people who have PTSD, issues with people who have pets. Fireworks, especially around the Fourth of July, are kind of wreaking havoc in our city. And the photos that I have up on Revere TV right now, this is what St. Mary's parking lot looked like on the morning of July 5th, around 11:30 the next morning after the Fourth of July. So this scene, our DPW guys had to go down and clean up what members of the public just blatantly just trashed and left in our community. And across the city, there were many streets, many side streets, many roadways that had, after the Fourth of July and the weekend following, these types of debris just left on the street. So in addition to the safety aspect and the quality of life aspect, this is kind of wreaking havoc, just making our city dirty and not images that we want to be projecting to our community. So I ask that the council send this to Legislative Affairs in that we act on it as soon as we can. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Silvestri.
Thank you, Madam President. If this is going to Legislative Affairs, I can hold my comments to that.
Okay, Councilor, Councilor Morabito.
So this will go in my Legislative Affairs Committee, and I'm going to ask the city clerk if she can set it up for September 11th before our next council meeting. I think there's a lot of discussion about this ordinance, and one thing I'd like, well the chief's here, and I know I bring this up every year, because, you know, it's not something that stays in someone's mind, fireworks, all year round. Then the summer months come, before you know it, July's here, right? And then everyone's complaining about the fireworks, and we don't have any tip lines or hotlines, and I'd like to see that going forward, an anonymous tip line as well. But yeah, we'll have further discussion in Legislative Affairs. Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Zambudo.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to commend my colleague for this motion. I'm in favor of it 100%. Thank you.
So we're going to refer this to public safety and Legislative Affairs? Just Legislative Affairs? Okay, thank you.
Calendar item number five, communication from the Election Commission relative to the warrant for the September 19th municipal preliminary election.
State your name and address, please.
Madam Chair, Paul Fahey, Election Commissioner. I have two routine items on the agenda tonight. The first is the warrant for the September 19th preliminary. Hello? Okay. Yep, it's a typical warrant that you always receive. It reflects the changes in polling locations that you approved at a previous meeting. Happy to take any questions, otherwise asking for the council to approve.
Councilor Morabito.
Just a little off-topic. What are we doing about the lighting at Beechmont School?
We, my staff and I are actually going to all of the school precinct locations Wednesday with Carl, the director, and the local custodians in each school to review what's there. We store some of our election items at the different schools depending on their storage availability, and that's one of the issues they're going to be looking at. We're trying to improve that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're going to have a more standard setup of how the polling locations are that reflect lighting as well as keeping, where we have multiple precincts in one location, we literally have a divider that you're going to see when you go in for the preliminary to make it very clear if you have two or three precincts, such as Beechmont, which is 1-1, which is 1-2, and so forth.
And can you provide the clerk with the feedback so she can relay it to us?
Sure.
Thanks.
Councilor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Mr. Fahey. I was just downstairs, saw some of the new signage that you guys have, so I just wanted to thank you. You guys look like you really stepped up your game where people can actually see more clearly where the polling locations are.
Thank you, Counselor. As I mentioned to you, I think during the budget hearings, we've purchased what we call, what are called, the feather flags, and we'll have those at each location. When I leave here, I'm going back to run a training session next door at the Legion for our poll workers, and we're sharing that with them as well.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Okay, could you continue? More questions? Okay. All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number six, communication from the Election Commissioner requesting city council approval of detailed police officers for the 2023 municipal elections.
Madam Chair, Paul Fahey, Election Commissioner. This you also dealt with as a council last year. If you remember, the Votes Act, Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2022, now require the city council to approve the detailing of police officers. Our practice has been to have one officer at each polling location during the day. That's 10 locations in this cycle, and they are outlined below. So I've spoken with the chief, we're in agreement about the detailing, and we're just asking for your approval as per the Votes Act requirement.
Thank you. Any councilors?
So move.
Roque, all in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Thank you.
Calendar item number seven, communication from the Chief of Police relative to a presentation on the Police Department's application for the FY '23 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant.
Chief, can you, your name and?
Yes. Chief David Callahan, the Police Department. I'm just going to pass out. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Council President, I'm here tonight before the council regarding the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, called the JAG Grant, that we put in for every year. This year, it's in the amount of $20,227. Basically, this funding will be used for police overtime to conduct, participate in school and community outreach or engagement activities and events. We also use it to utilize and expand some of the domestic violence investigations because since COVID, our domestic violence cases and matters have dramatically increased, and the numbers continue to be up and high. So we use that for additional training, supplement the domestic violence unit with overtime so they can assist victims, they can take them to court and do other things and have additional hours where they can offer assistance to assist some of these folks that are, you know, in desperate need of help from the Police Department and the courts. And that's basically what we use the money for. We also use it for some community engagement with the schools, the boxing program, the honor guard, and other stuff with the Police Department. So it's very beneficial, and the grant money is necessary and does help us supplement in these other matters that go on, that saves us the $20,000 out of our regular budget.
Any questions, councilors? Councilor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Chief Callahan. Domestic violence unit. Could you just touch on that just a little bit and explain exactly how that works, you know, what an officer, any specific training that might happen differently for those people?
Yes. Currently, we have a lieutenant who oversees all the domestic violence matters, so he refuses the cases, and we also have a victim witness advocate who also helps assisting the victims. But we have some officers that are assigned to the shift that have been given additional training on domestic violence matters, and they also work as liaisons for Lieutenant Azari. So if there's an issue, he can't get through with the entire follow-up, he'll refer it to them, and they take care of it with their shift. And if we need them on overtime, we'll pay them overtime to look into these matters.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Any other councilors? Going to place this on file.
Calendar item number eight, communication from the City Auditor relative to the budget for the opioid recovery and remediation trust fund.
State your name and address, please.
Good afternoon, Richard Viskey, 21 Broadway. We are before you this evening to ask for an appropriation from the opioid settlement trust fund that we established last year. Funds have been received and sit in that trust fund, and now in order to appropriate them, to use them toward the opioid pandemic, we are before you asking for an appropriation from said trust fund to the Health and Human Services budget. Happy to answer any questions on that transfer.
Any councilors? Councilor Rizzo.
Madam President, I have a question. I don't even know if it pertains to this specific funding, but do you, can you shed some light on the large settlement that the state of Massachusetts received that those funds were supposed to be trickling down to cities and towns over a period of time? Do we, is that, would that include these funds here, or is that something separate? Or?
I think there's a multitude of different pharmaceutical companies that are in this lawsuit that settle once at a time. This is the results of two settlements with the distributors and with Johnson &amp; Johnson. So the dollars that we are scheduled to get from those two equal 1.2 million. They're structured settlements, so they come in over the next 15 years or so.
That's, that's kind of the answer I was looking for.
But there are others that are lined up that may end up settling, and I think this particular trust fund that we've established, any dollars that come in from those settlements will be in that trust fund. That trust fund accrues interest that remains with the fund, and in order for us to access those dollars, it requires an appropriation from the council. But to get more detail on which cases are pending and where they stand, I'd have to get back to you on that or do a little research. I don't have all the details on those matters.
Okay, and through you, Madam President, would you know, is this based on population, what each community gets? Is it based on need? I mean, what's the criteria for the communities that are receiving funding through this grant program?
I wouldn't want to speculate right now. I think I know, but I wouldn't want to say it on camera, but if you give me a chance, I will report back with that info.
Okay, no problem at all. Thanks, Rich.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Silvestri.
Mr. Viskey, will we get a breakdown of how this will be spent once the money's put into the funder?
Yeah, it was part of the budget, although it was a large document, but what we're doing is we're funding 50% of two different salaries, one of the social worker and one of the substance use manager, and then $10,000 of that will be for expenses. So $88,429 for the equivalent of one full-time equivalent and $10,000 for miscellaneous expenses.
Thank you.
Any other councilors? Road call.
Shall the city council transfer $98,429 from the opioid recovery and remediation trust fund as follows, $88,429 to public health salaries account, and $10,000 to public health expenses account? Councilor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Nowoselski is absent. Councilor Powers is absent. Councilor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sorino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and President Protem Por McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved.
Thank you.
Calendar item number nine, motion presented by Councilor Cogliandro that the acting mayor, superintendent of schools, and state delegation provide information about the state of emergency that was declared by Governor Healey concerning the influx of migrants into Massachusetts and the effects the migration will have on the City of Revere, including but not limited to the city's available shelter facilities, attendance at Revere public schools, and sources of state funding to offset these impacts in our community.
Councilor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Madam President. The motion kind of speaks for itself. We're just trying to get some information on how we're going to handle these people that are coming into all the communities and specifically Revere. I know that it's been said that there's more here than we anticipated already, and if we're going to, you know, be providing help, we should have a plan. If they need a place to go, I would recommend going to the Amazon facility that's completely empty where Showcase Cinemas was, because there's plenty of room over there. But looking forward to some conversation about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Anyone else? I'd like to speak from the chair. Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you. So I was told last week, I had the emergency director call me and say that there was a number of people that were left just in Revere, but also they were left in Everett, Malden, Chelsea. They were just left there. The state dropped the ball, the federal government dropped the ball, they didn't communicate that these people were here. These people had nothing, nothing. So we started a program to get diapers and socks and feminine hygiene necessities to help these people. There's been a lot of not-nice things that have been said on Facebook about this, but we are people, we are human beings, we're all together. These people are fleeing countries that are violent, and they're afraid for their lives. And yes, they are coming here, but they're not coming here in an organized manner, they are just dumped here, and we're all the same. So I just, the hatred that is spewing on Facebook is terrible. It really disturbs me because my mother came from Italy with a baby, a three-month-old baby. She had nothing, nothing, and she came to Beechmont. And so my mother was an immigrant, and when people say, well, take care of your vets, my father was in the U.S. Army, was a staff sergeant. My both nephews were in the Iraq war, and I take care of my nephew. So if, I mean, I just, I just don't understand this hatred, and it really bothers me, and all I can say is that we need to help people. People need to help people. We can't be divided anymore. We have to love each other and come together as a group, as a city. Revere has always been there for everybody, so let's step up Revere and help these people. Thank you. Any other councils? I'm sorry. All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 10, motion presented by Councilor Silvestri that the certificate, I'm sorry, that the city council awards certificates of commendation to call takers Brennan Kaiser and Christopher Stewart for their efforts in response during the shooting on Revere Beach Memorial Day weekend.
Councilor Silvestri.
I will hold my comments for the night of the motion, but I was asked, Madam, if, Secretary, if we could add a few names to that list. I can do it on the side afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors? All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 12, motion presented by Councilor Silvestri that the acting mayor requests the Director of Parks and Recreation to appear before the city council to address the loss of revenue due to the development of the new Revere High School.
Councilor Silvestri.
Oh, excuse me, I missed one.
I'm sorry.
Motion presented by Councilor Silvestri, this is calendar item number 11, that the acting mayor requests Dr. Kelly and Dr. Galucci to appear before the city council to address plans for the high school athletic programs during the redevelopment of the new Revere High School.
Councilor Silvestri.
Motion speaks for itself.
All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 12, motion presented by Councilor Silvestri that the acting mayor requests the Director of Parks and Recreation to appear before the city council to address the loss of revenue due to the development of the new Revere High School.
Councilor Silvestri.
Motion speaks for itself.
All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Councilor Sorino that the city council award a certificate of commendation to Director of Veteran Services Mark Silvestri for his dedicated service to the veterans of Revere during his six-and-a-half-year tenure as the community's VSO.
Councilor Sorino.
Madam President, I'd like to reserve my remarks for the evening that we present this in the hopes that the director's family and close friends will be here as well that evening, so we can give him the proper recognition and send off that he so deserves from his previous role. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Sorino. I would like to have everybody stand up and give a round of applause to Mark Silvestri, please. All in favor? I'm sorry. Councilor Morabito.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to say, so I went to high school with Mark, and, you know, he wasn't the ideal role model as a student, and he turned into a wonderful guy. He served our country, received a Purple Heart, he was the recipient of the Purple Heart, and since he's taken over the Veterans Department, his contributions to the veterans in this city, I can't even speak to how much he's contributed to them. Whenever I speak to a veteran, they elaborate on how much he's, when above and beyond, whether it was going above and beyond his roles and responsibilities as director and helping a veteran move on a weekend when he's not working, or helping that veteran get food or housing. I don't even think, know if people realize how much he played a part in contributing to the necessities that these veterans needed. So you were so appreciated in that role, so thank you for all you've done.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm a little iffy on this one. I'm just going to keep it very simple. I have seen Councilor.
Councilor, your uncle Matt clapped at home, that's what he just texted me.
I have seen Councilor Silvestri in action. I've had the opportunity to work with the Veteran Services Office. There is nobody in this community that has ever or will ever do as much as Mark Silvestri did for the veterans that live here. I want to make that very clear, and we are losing an asset and a half to this city. Thank you for everything you've done, Mark. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Madam President. As a fellow veteran here, sitting on the city council with you, I know the commitment that you made to your country. I know the commitment that I've had the opportunity to see firsthand here, working in municipal government and talking to veterans out there who have had the opportunity to be helped by the services that you provide. I know, not to chime in, as Councilor Morabito said about the past and so on and so forth, but, you know, we haven't always politically aligned, but I will say that serving with you up here during the years that I have, you've been nothing but. nothing but respectful. You're an excellent public servant, and I just want to congratulate you on the job that you've done during your years in Veteran Services and now as a member of the City Council. So congratulations. Wish you all the luck.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Visconti?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to reiterate some of my colleague's remarks. Mark, congratulations on the new job, first and foremost. The city of Revere will best you. You've taken the Veterans Office to a new level, and it shows, you know, with all the veterans that you've helped over the years. So I'm sure they're disappointed to see you go, but also wish you the best of luck in your new endeavors, and congratulations for doing such a great job.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Silvestri and I have had our differences politically, but I never questioned his integrity as a Veterans Agent, and I talked to a lot of veterans in this city who he's helped. And like was said, I think by Counselor Morabito and Counselor Cogliandro, he goes way above and beyond what's required. And I'm happy he's taken a state job and going to be helping veterans statewide and more so that he won't be working for the city and be the City Council, and now he can get paid for the job he's doing up here. So I'm very happy for you and heartfelt thanks for your service.
Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you, Counselor. Mark, you were my student at Revere High School, and I am so proud of you that you are the man that you have become. I just want to say that you have put the city of Revere on the map. Before you came in as the Director, Revere was not on the map. Cities and towns look at Revere now as the leader for veterans. So congratulations on this. I hope you do wonderful things in your new job, and we love you. Thank you.
Madam President, without objection, can I amend the motion to include all members of the City Council with the exception of Councilor Silvestri? If there be no objection.
Yes, definitely. Anyone else? All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 14, motion presented by Councilor Cogliandro that the City Council award certificates of commendation to the Boston Rednecks players, coaches, and staff for winning their fifth straight national championship in the Women's Football Alliance.
Counselor Cogliandro?
We have a professional sports team that's home is Revere, Massachusetts, and it's time that we give them the recognition that they deserve. Thank you.
Great motion, Counselor. All in, anybody else? Any other councilors? Counselor Morabito?
I commend my colleague for putting forth this motion. You know, these women are such a role model for so many little girls throughout our city, and just to commend them on their achievement speaks volumes. And so many girls throughout the city have watched their games and seeing us reward them, and it not going unnoticed speaks volumes. So thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 15, motion presented by Councilor Cogliandro, whereas Section 9.12.030 posting political signs of the revised ordinances of the city of Revere is content-based and unconstitutional by violating the First Amendment pursuant to the Supreme Court's decision on Reed versus Town of Gilbert, that the City Council order to a public hearing the repeal of said section.
Counselor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, here we go. I respect people who follow this in regards to the Constitution. I also respect people who follow this in regards to the city ordinance. At the end of the day, it's unenforceable. And truthfully, it's causing issues in this city, and that was my main reason for putting this in. I've been told in the past that there is a gentleman's agreement, and every year, somebody starts putting signs out, and everybody else follows suit. And again, I respect everybody's opinion. Whatever you want to do is what you want to do. But I would like to put this into subcommittee. After speaking with the solicitor, there are some parts of this ordinance that are good and can be upheld, but most of it cannot because it is unconstitutional. And going forward, if we do decide to repeal this whole thing, why not every time we have a ballot set, all the candidates get into this room in a public meeting, and we all decide when's a good time to put signs out? That would make it public. That would make everybody hold to their word, and there wouldn't be any issues. So that's what I recommend, and hopefully this is going to go to a public hearing, correct? So, okay, thank you.
Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to commend my colleague for this motion, the courage to put it through. As he said, this was unconstitutional from day one, but it was always a gentleman's agreement. The only problem with a gentleman's agreement is you need gentlemen. And it's, there's always someone that wants to break it. And I'm as guilty as anybody putting signs out too early because everybody else did, and I jumped in. And I'm not comfortable with that, but it is a constitutional issue, and the last thing I ever want to do is go against the Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Morabito?
Madam President, will this be going to Legislative Affairs? A public hearing and then legislative?
Yeah, go ahead.
The City Council could either amend it in committee prior to it being sent to a public hearing, or the Council could order it to a public hearing. It's up to, it's your decision.
What's the will of the Council?
So do I still have the floor, Madam?
I'm sorry.
No, I was just asking if I still-
I would order it to a public hearing.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think the reason, I think we need to obviously stay within compliance of the First Amendment, but while at the same time, we need to maintain the interest of the residents, you know, because with sign pollution, so we need to take a look at the ordinance. You know, we want to make sure that someone's not keeping up a sign for like two years or a year. You know, we don't want to see this sign. So I think we do need to look at it. It's up to you. Whatever my colleagues settle on, I'm fine with.
Point of order. I think if it goes to a public hearing, it's going to go to committee after the public hearing, and we can work out the details then.
Counselor Cogliandro?
Thank you. I was just going to say that I would rather eliminate a step. If we send it to committee, then to a public hearing, and then to a committee, it's a waste of time, frankly. If we want to make an amendment on the floor now, I'm open to it. But, you know, that's, and to Counselor Morabito's point, that's the whole thing. If somebody wants to keep a sign on their lawn for two years, they can, and there's nothing we can do about it because it's unenforceable. And that's the whole purpose of this. So, you know, I choose the Constitution. That's my personal opinion. But I would like to see this go to a public hearing in hopes that after that, we send it to subcommittee unless everybody feels that we should vote on it then. But I have spoken to the solicitor. This is, this would, this motion would not have made it on the agenda if the solicitor did not look it over first. Thank you.
Permission to speak on the floor, please? So we do have an ordinance on signs, and I don't know if it has anything to do with political signs, but we do have an ordinance on the books that we can't, there's no advertising signs that should be on, you know, any public way. So how do we determine that? Two different things?
Madam President, if I may, it's, we're talking about signs on people's homes. You know, I don't know about billboards. That's, public way is a whole different, a whole different topic. Thank you.
So are we going to amend this on the floor?
We send it to a public hearing. We amend it in committee afterwards.
Okay. Order to a public hearing? Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Serino, I am very sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I wanted to commend Counselor Cogliandro on this, and after the great sign debacle of Revere of 2023, I was reading into this, and the city of Newton actually recently, I think right before or during COVID, amended their political sign ordinance for similar reasons. And, you know, Counselor Cogliandro alluded to that some parts of the ordinance are good to keep, particularly, I think, when we think of size and whatnot, size measurements and stuff like that of how big is too big, or can they, you know, the sizes on the signs. But the general, the way I, the way I think that it works in the eyes of the law, whether it's a sign for a political candidate in the city of Revere, or a political ideology, or political, you know, national political person, as we see have been popping up on lawns across the Commonwealth and across the country, I don't think the courts differentiate between local officials and higher or political ideologies. So I think in terms of, you know, moving forward, where this is unenforceable, I think it would be just better to adhere to what the courts have said and, you know, err on the side of what the other courts have said, to avoid a lawsuit down the line, which I wouldn't be shocked if that eventually were to happen down the line, if we didn't try to take corrective measures. So thank you. I'm fully supportive. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors? Before I forget anybody? Okay. This is going to be sent to a public hearing.
Calendar item number 16, motion presented by President Prottempor McKenna that the acting mayor request Consumer Affairs and the Police Department to issue a public service announcement warning residents of ongoing scams that are taking place in our community. Recently, Award One resident lost several thousand dollars due to a fraudulent driveway paving scheme, and I have received complaints from residents who have received phone calls from individuals identifying themselves as police officers requesting credit card information. These scams directly target our vulnerable seniors.
Thank you, everybody. I was just aware a couple of weeks ago that one of my residents got scammed. He invited, I guess there was a driveway paving company going around asking to pave their driveways, and he said he would love his driveway to be paved. They took him for $7,000. Then we tried to call the company the next day, and the number was unlisted. The other thing is that police fire are calling. They're asking for money. They're asking for your information. If you get some sort of a computer programmer asking for the money, do not hang up. But I just think that we really need to protect our seniors and everybody else, really, that people come to the door and knock and say, "Hey, we can do your roof. We can do this. We can do this." I think we really need to have Consumer Affairs and the Police Department really do a robocall and just say, you know, "Watch out." And that's where I am. Thank you very much. All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 17, motion presented by Councilor Powers that the acting mayor request the Building Department General Counsel to provide an update on the litigation status of the property at 585 North Shore Road.
Do we have any information on this, councilors? Okay. Okay, all in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 18, motion presented by Counselor Silvestri and President Prottemp McKenna that the acting mayor request the MBTA to install naloxone Narcan boxes at all Blue Line T stops in Revere.
Counselor Silvestri, I'm going to have you speak on this.
Thank you, Madam President. So the MBTA just did a pilot program on their portion of the red line, and as we've seen tonight with the award giving to our Parking Control Officer, Marco, that this, these are life-saving tools. And to have them in our train stations where homeless and people that have drug issues are often around, I think it's a good thing, and I think the T should look through having them through all their train stations, but first and foremost here in Revere. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else? All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 19, this is a late communication from Anderson and Krieger LLP providing a second legal opinion on the power and authority of the acting mayor in response to Council Order 23-178.
Madam President.
Counselor Zambudo?
Can we have the clerk read the communication, please?
Yes.
Dated August 24, 23, you have asked for our opinion regarding the powers of the acting mayor of the city of Revere, the city, under the city charter, a Plan B charter pursuant to general laws, Chapter 43, Sections 56 through 63, as amended in relevant part by Chapter 147 of the Acts of 2004 and Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2011, the Charter. In addition, you have asked us to review the opinion provided by Attorney Lauren F. Goldberg of KP Law to the city solicitor dated June 2, 23, on this subject. As explained in further detail below, we believe that the charter limits the acting mayor's authority to, one, time-sensitive actions that cannot wait for the election of a new mayor, and, two, which do not result in a permanent appointment. Both conditions must be met. While we agree with Attorney Goldberg's opinion that this determination requires a case-by-case analysis, we believe her opinion could give the false impression that the acting mayor may take any action as long as it does not have permanent consequences, thereby passing the first requirement above. To the extent that is how her advice is being understood, that is incorrect. The Charter language, Chapter 147 of the Acts of 2004 amended the Charter to read as follows. "The president of the city council shall perform the duties of mayor until a new mayor is elected and sworn to the faithful discharge of his duties. The president of the city council shall be called acting mayor, and he shall possess the powers of mayor only in matters not admitting of delay, but shall have no power to make permanent appointments." This language mirrors that in several statutes regarding the powers of acting officials, including those of acting mayors under other plans of city government and acting attorneys general. The language has received relatively little judicial interpretation, as Attorney Goldberg notes, the leading exposition of the language remains the Supreme Judicial Court's detailed discussion in Dimick versus Barry. Dimick arose from an order of the Cambridge City Council laying out a street. The Cambridge City Charter at the time provided the mayor had 10 days to approve or veto that action upon its presentation to the mayor. However, at the time the order issued, the elected mayor was ill and unable to perform his duties. The president of the Board of Aldermen was acting mayor. The acting mayor approved the order without waiting for the elected mayor to return. The question before the court was then whether the duty to approve or veto a street layout was such an action not admitting of delay, such that the 10-day period had began to run, notwithstanding that an acting mayor rather than an elected mayor was in office. In deciding the question, the court did grasp that there are instances where the delay of public business required for awaiting the mayor would be so great to be unreasonable and to create a situation for action by the acting mayor. The case cannot, however, be read for the proposition that the statutory language was intended to give the acting mayor broad authority given that concern. Indeed, the court specifically found that the requirement that a mayor approve or veto a street layout could wait and invalidated the action. Further, the court's brief, three-page decision is replete with language explaining why the acting mayor's authority should be narrowly rather than liberally construed. The court noted the significance to the performance of official executive duties by the person elected by the people rather than by a substitute designated in this instance in another way. The words "not admitting of delay" are, according to the court, plain and empathetic. They express a definite conception of a necessity so important that it cannot be resisted with reason. When a public officer undertakes to perform by way of substitution duties so definitely circumscribed and their validity is questioned, it must appear that they are warranted, and so presumptions exist in their favor. The court went on to contrast those instances of irresistible public urgency, warranting action by the mayor necessary to override the presumption of awaiting an elected mayor. These include, for instance- a warrant for an election, or an appropriation of money to be used for a Fourth of July celebration, or a corporate anniversary, or like orders where time appears to be the essence of the subject. Appropriations necessary for immediate payment of fixed charges of various municipal departments, or the nature of the order might stamp it as an emergency measure requiring instant attention, impending disaster, threatened disorder, public pestilence, devastation by a floor or fire, the range of subjects of this character. In other words, the acting mayor's authority is limited to emergencies or actions which would be mooted by the passage of time if not taken, not routine action, not routine municipal action that could wait. The court also made clear that this, that it was not issuing a blanket ruling on the types of matters that are or not urgent, but rather that the assessment needs to be made on a case-by-case basis. For instance, although the street layout at issue was not deemed urgent, that was because there was no evidence to indicate that in case at bar. Dimmick also notes a particular concern of leaving the decision of what matters are urgent in the hands of the acting mayor. The court disagreed that this was appropriate, stating, "The extremely limited power conferred by the statute does not seem to us to indicate legislative intent, to leave a question deemed so important to the conscience of the persons clothed temporarily with a power, for exercise of which they were not primarily selected." Dimmick suggests that one way to address these judgment calls would be to have the council itself vote that a particular order is not admitting of delay. While this too would not be, while this too would not be conclusive, it would create a strong presumption that a true, true existenti- I'm sorry, I can't even pronounce that. True, exen, I'm sorry, what? Exigency exists, application to the mayor and the acting mayor. Attorney Goldberg does not dispute that there is no particular list of what constitutes a matter not admitting of delay, or matters of urgent and critical need. Goldberg add two, and we do agree with her, much of the day-to-day function of the executive branch of government requires immediate action, including authorizing payment of current vendors and employees, for instance. However, where we disagree is the interpretation that this means that the acting mayor simply should avoid making permanent decisions that cannot be undone without significant consequences, consequences, such as making a permanent appointment. As Attorney Goldberg's analysis appears to suggest, because certain municipal employees can be terminated at will, the acting mayor is free to appoint these employees regardless of the urgency for appointment. The analysis is in Dimmick, however, does not depend on the consequences of an acting mayor's actions, but rather the necessity for the action at the time it is taken. With Dimmick read in this light, the prohibition on permanent appointments is not just an example of actions an acting mayor may take, I'm sorry, acting mayor cannot take, but rather an additional limitation on the acting mayor's powers over and above the threshold requirement that the action be immediately necessary. For example, assume that the city treasurer abruptly resigns during the tenure of the acting mayor. Under the first requirement of the Charter, the mayor may need to fill that position. However, if that requirement is met, the mayor must be careful to only appoint an acting treasurer to avoid running afoul of the second requirement. On this point, Attorney Goldberg, Goldberg's opinion and the case law seem clear. On the other hand, the acting mayor cannot fill a latent vacancy in a position where a department could function without the temporary appointment, because that appointment would admit of delay. This would be true regardless of whether the appointment requires City Council confirmation under other provisions of the Charter, and regardless of whether a future elected mayor could simply terminate that employee. In short, the acting mayor may only take an action if it meets both requirements, one, that the action be so urgent as to not admit of delay, and two, that the action not result in a permanent appointment.
Thank you. Any other counselors? I'm going to place this on file.
And one late motion presented by Counselor Zimbudo, pursuant to the legal opinion received by Anderson, Anderson and Krieger LLP, dated August 24, relative to the power and authority of the acting mayor, that the acting mayor immediately cease and desist taking actions admitting of delay resulting in permanent appointments or hires.
Counselor Zimbudo.
Thank you, Madam President. I think it's quite evident that the first opinion was incorrect. This opinion is written by one of the renowned municipal law firms in the state. And it's clear that the acting mayor has limited powers, and therefore, I think it's necessary to cease and desist any appointments. And that's what my motion is for. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Counselor Silvestri.
Is that moving forward, or is that ones that have been made, how we making this? Is it moving forward? He cease and desist, or if he's made an appointment, is someone losing their job?
Counselor Cogliandro.
I think I know what Counselor Silvestri is trying to say is, is this going to affect the people that have already been hired?
I don't think it should.
It does not. It does not.
Okay. I don't think it should. Counselor Maribito.
Regardless, right, has, were appointments made, new hires?
Yes.
There were?
Fifteen.
Fifteen new hires? So they're on a temporary basis?
No.
So he, he's in clear violation anyways. So, at the end of the day, we're an at-will state. So, however you look at it, these employers can be terminated when they're, if there's a new mayor?
Yes.
But that's, that's always been the case.
This is where I disagree. This is where I disagree. These people have signed union contracts and agreements. We, I think we need to look into this. I understand that he got, obviously, the wrong information. He acted on it. We now have new information. But moving forward, we, there's a lot of things that we need to look into. We just can't say, oh, you hired on a temporary basis, see you later, because the guy was given wrong information. He was given wrong information.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Permission to speak from the chair, please? I think these people were, they were permanently hired. They weren't appointed. A lot of them, a couple of them were from DPW. I think there was a librarian that was hired. There was a couple of people from the water department, and there were police and fire hired. So I think in total, there were 15 people, but they weren't appointed. There wasn't a director appointed. There wasn't, they were just hired because they needed to be hired. So that's, that's the information I have. Thank you.
Madam.
Counselor Visconti.
Thank you. Can we just get a breakdown of, of the hires, exactly the numbers in the departments as well, if that's possible? And, well, if we can have it handed to us, and given it to us by email or whatever, I'd rather see it in print.
Sure. Yeah, we can do that.
I don't want to take anybody's time away from speaking, but all this talking about the hires are irrelevant to the motion that's on the floor. A motion on the floor is to cease and desist future hirings. But it, we're not addressing the people that are already hired. Most of them are union positions, I think. And we can't correct the wrong. We can't, he had bad information, a bad opinion, and they followed that bad opinion. So, that's, we're trying to stop that from happening now. So, I don't want, anybody can go on and on and on. But the motion on the floor is to cease and desist.
Okay. Road call, or shall we just? Okay. Sorry. Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Madam President. So, yes, I, it's to my understanding that people have been giving, have been given the title acting, or that when they get hired through a union, they are a temporary position, because there's, there's a year-long, a year-long probationary period. So, but I, you know, I'm not saying anything malicious was done, but I want to follow the rules. Whatever the rules are, that's what I want to do. And I don't care who the acting mayor is. I don't care who's in that seat. We need to establish these rules so that if this ever happens again, we don't have to get, you know, second, first and second opinions and all of that. So, if this is what we need to do, I don't want to hurt anybody who's already been given a job. Imagine signing a contract and then say, hey, sorry, we messed up. We can't do that. But going forward, as Counselor Zimbudo said, this might be the right thing to do. You know, and, and again, I wish that we could all work together on this and be more of a part of the deciding if it's a matter of delay for the city, or a matter without delay for the city, you know, just have a collaborative effort. Because if some of these, you know, some of these positions are actually emergency positions, we should be filling them. Right. Exactly. So, that's all. I just, whatever, whatever the right thing is to do, whatever the rules are, that's what we should follow. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Okay. So, should we take a road call? Okay. Ashley.
On the motion, Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Maribito.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nowakiewicz is absent. Counselor Powers is absent. Counselor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Serino.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zimbudo.
Yes.
Yes. And President Protemp McKenna.
Yes.
Yes. The motion is approved. There's no further business.
Okay. This meeting is adjourned until September 11. Please enjoy your Labor Day and stay safe. And I just want to give a shout out to Happy New Year to all our Revere students that are starting school, I think tomorrow. Oh, and we have another.
Point of personal privilege?
Yes.
If we can just all sing Happy Birthday to Counselor Cogliandro. It's his birthday.
I'll start.
We're not going to sing. You don't want.
No, I'll start.
No, 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 please. No, everyone's got a tune. Happy birthday to you.
Point of order.
Happy birthday, dear Anthony. Happy birthday to you. Cha-cha-cha.
You know, I'm just, there were some counselors who weren't singing. I'm not going to name names, but thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.